One meeting of the Anacortes Planning Commission. During roll call, I see we have Ms. Luther not present, meaning the manager of the commissioners are present, including our new member, Jack Curtis. Welcome, Jack. Good to see you here.
Hey, thank you.
Pleasure to be here.
Welcome aboard.
I want to make sure that we say thanks to Michael Courtwright for his service as he goes off at the Planning Commission. Has anybody had a chance, has everybody had a chance to review the draft minutes from October 27th? Any issues or questions?
No, they look very good.
No, no, no problems being heard. We will okay those minutes. Mr. Meesmer, do we have any correspondence not related to the agenda items?
No correspondence, Mr. Chair, other than, as you mentioned, I would like to welcome Mr. Jack Curtis to the commission and thank Mr. Courtwright for his service during the time periods that he was here. Mr. Curtis will be here with us through December 2023, hopefully. That, I have nothing further to offer, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We'll move on to new business. Our first item in the agenda is a public hearing, SDP 2021-0005, for the City of Anacortes Wastewater Treatment Plant Outfall Relocation, including a shoreline conditional use permit and a shoreline substantial development permit. I assume the staff have a presentation for us.
Yes. Good evening, Chair, and members of the audience, and rest of the planning commissioners, of course. This evening, we have, well, my name's Libby Graich. I'm planning manager for the City of Anacortes, and I'm hoping that you can see my screen. Yes, okay, thank you. So, welcome to the open record pre-decision hearing for the City of Anacortes file number SDP 2021-0005. The project's titled "The Anacortes Wastewater Treatment Plant Outfall Replacement and Relocation Project." The project site is located in northern Anacortes along Gwemas Channel. It will be located within the T Avenue and U Avenue, Fourth and Third Street rights-of-way, and then into Gwemas Channel itself. The applicant for the project is the City of Anacortes Public Works Department Director, Fred Buckenmeyer, and the project contact is Ross Widener from Widener and Associates. And again, the project location includes City of Anacortes right-of-way and also state-owned aquatic lands out in Gwemas Channel, which are managed by the Department of Natural Resources. Can I just ask really quick, can you see my pointer? Thank you.
Yes.
I always wonder about that. So, the proposal is to replace and relocate the damaged wastewater treatment plant outfall, outfall pipe. It was damaged during a February 2020 storm that was federally declared as a disaster event. The city considered various options, including replacing the existing outfall in the current location, but ultimately determined to relocate the outfall to a new location that would have better access for future maintenance needs and also a better mixing zone for aquatic health. And so you can see, oh, this one, on this map, here's the Anacortes Wastewater Treatment Plant down on Fourth and T Avenue, and the orange line is the existing pipe and outfall that runs along Fourth Street up north onto the Port of Anacortes property within a 20-foot-wide easement, and then the outfall diffuser are located on the west side of the Pier Two Marine Terminal. So, the new outfall would be located to the east within the U Avenue right-of-way alignment. And that would consist, the new pipe would consist of a 48-inch diameter fiberglass reinforced pipe coming from the wastewater treatment plant for about 1,631 feet until the Gwemas Channel shoreline. And from there, it will, the pipe would reduce to a 42-inch outside diameter high-density polyethylene or HTPE pipe for another 1,030 feet. And then there would be an 86-foot diffuser angled at the northeast at approximately 24.5 degrees to better match the biodirectional current. And the total length of the pipe from the wastewater treatment plant to the end of the pipe would be 2,661 feet. And then another note that the existing wastewater treatment plant outfall would be decommissioned after the new one is completed and in service. So, the, because the project does include components that are located within 200 feet of the, of shorelines of the state, the project requires a shoreline substantial development permit and a shoreline conditional use permit. The appropriate review type for this process or for these permits is a type 4 review. The shoreline substantial development permit exceeds the $1 million valuation threshold, which kicks it into a type 4 city council decision. And so we're processing both permits through that process concurrently. A little bit of project history. And I have to thank Emily for the cool graphics and animations. Thank you, Emily. Project history, February 2nd, 2021, the applicant held a mandatory pre-application meeting. March 9th, there was a mandatory neighborhood, pre-application neighborhood meeting with the neighbors. May 24th, the applicant submitted the formal application for the shoreline substantial development permit and the shoreline conditional use permit. On June 18th, the application was deemed complete by the planning department. On June 23rd, the department issued a notice of application with, using the optional SEPA DNS process, and there was a 30-day written public comment period, which ended on July 23rd. The city issued a SEPA threshold determination, a mitigated SEPA threshold determination on September 27th. And then the notice of public hearing was published on November 3rd, and here we are tonight, November 24th, for the open record pre-decision hearing. This map is zooming in a little more closely on the shoreline portion of this project, which is what we're looking at this evening. You can see here's Pier, Pier Two. The shoreline jurisdictional area is generally this colored area 200 feet back from ordinary high water. So, we've got the urban maritime shoreline environment designation, and then to the east, the red is the shoreline residential designation. And then out in the water has a aquatic shoreline environment designation. These red dotted lines here are representing the harbor area with the inner harbor line here and the outer harbor line here. So, within shoreline jurisdiction, because the project's within shoreline jurisdiction, it's subject to the shoreline master program as we, as I mentioned, and the site is located in the urban maritime and aquatic shoreline environment designation. So, this is the permitted use table that's within our SMP that tells us what uses and development types are permitted in, in different shoreline environments. And this particular project is classified as a major utility, and we can see here that within the aquatic shoreline designation, it's a conditional use, and within the urban maritime designation, it's a permitted use. There are a few critical areas within the site vicinity, the orange stripes here. So, here's the project area right here. The orange stripes are tsunami hazard area. The pale blue is area that is susceptible to liquid faction. So, those are both geologically hazardous areas. The blue area out here in the channel is a designated fish and wildlife habitat conservation area as dungeonous crab habitat, and that's designated by the Department of Fish and Wildlife. And then the entire area within the water is within the regulated flood plain. The project components include, in the upland, so the area upland from the shoreline and aquatic portions, include the pipe placement below the existing right-of-way or roadway and right-of-way. So, for this entire upland section, the, all of the pipe is, is going to be underground until it gets to the shoreline location here, and that work will require excavation and some rock blasting for placement at an appropriate depth. And I think the rock blasting and the applicant can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's right in this area here, right where So, those roads where the pipe is placed, they will be replaced to the existing grade and topography and then up to city standards and codes. So, the shoreline and marine components of this project will include excavation along the shoreline area. So, here's a photo where you're looking at, this is the end of U Avenue right here. So, this area would be excavated so that the pipe can be placed at a, at the correct depth. And then it will continue underground and then into the water underground. There will be removal of contaminated sediment as part of the project, and then any of the areas that are trench will be backfilled with pre-exist, to pre-existing conditions with clean materials. And the project will also include, here, we're looking back up at the end of U Avenue with, there's, this is an existing outfall drainage pipe, and there's a lot of foreign debris and garbage that are on the existing shoreline that will be cleaned up as part of this project. This is a plan view, looking at the outfall location within the, a portion of the uplands and then into the marine portion of the project area. So, here's U Avenue. And again, the pipe will be, or excuse me, the ground will be excavated to bury the pipe for about 380 feet within the water to about 30 feet below mean lower low water, where it will emerge from the bank, and then it will be anchored to the seabed for the rest of the way. This is an elevation or profile view showing the same, the same thing. So, here's the end of U Avenue here. You can see the pipe will be buried underground, then under the seabed, oops, sorry, I went too fast, to about 30 feet below mean lower low water, where it will be at surface and be located on the bottom of the seabed. And then here's the diffuser. Another, one of the project components will include development of a small pocket park at the end of U Avenue. The applicants, that would include replacement of about 6,000 square feet of impervious surfaces and replacement with native vegetation and pedestrian paths. So, this is a preliminary draft drawing showing what it could potentially look like. So, we've got, so right now, this is all large paved area cul-de-sac. So, the design would allow for access to the existing homes that are, that currently accessed from that location, and then this is pervious planted areas and a pedestrian path and a couple of parking spaces. Here's some photos, standing in the middle of U Avenue looking south, and then I turned around and looked north. So, this is the line that the, that the excavation will occur within towards Gwemas Channel. So, here we have the decision criteria. Of course, we're here this evening to look at whether the project conforms to the requirements under the shoreline master program for issuing a shoreline substantial development permit and a shoreline conditional use permit. So, I just placed the criteria for review of those types of permits here. Of course, in the staff report, we've gone into detail analyzing the project's conformance with those, with those criteria. But just a couple of key points. After staff review, the project is consistent with the applicable shoreline master program policies and development regulations, and those include the aquatic and urban maritime shoreline environment policies and regulations, the specific utilities regulations within the SMP, the specific shoreline modification policies and regulations, including shoreline stabilization and dredging. We also looked at the environmental protection requirements and shoreline public access. And then another key point is that the project is anticipated to provide a long-term improvement over the existing conditions, and that would occur through the improved dilution factor of the new outfall with it being located farther out into the channel. It's expected to have a better dilution of the treated wastewater. Also, the project will include removal of the contaminated sediments from the project footprint, removal of trash and foreign debris from the shoreline, and then, as I mentioned, review, the removal of invasive vegetation, vegetation and impervious surfaces from the end of U Avenue, and finally, installation of the native vegetation and pedestrian paths for the public access component. So, the city is responsible for reviewing the application for conformance with SMP, and I just wanted to put this up here to show you all of the different other permits from different federal and state agencies that the project is concurrently being reviewed by. So, here we are with the shoreline conditional use and the shoreline substantial development permit, but all these other permits are currently in process. WDFW recently issued the hydraulic project approval for the application. And then just also a note that for the shoreline conditional use permit component of this project, after the city has gone through its local process, so after the planning commission makes a recommendation of the city council, and the city council makes a decision, the, the conditional use permit then gets routed on to the Department of Ecology, and they make, they have the ultimate approval authority over that shoreline conditional use permit. And to wrap things up, staff is recommending that the planning commission recommend approval of the shoreline substantial development permit and the shoreline conditional use permit to city council. And that's all I have. I'm happy to try and answer questions if you have them. The, I know that the applicant is also available to answer questions, and, and they may have some clarifications or other remarks that they want to make. But I will turn it back over to you, Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Graich. Do the representatives, representatives of the applicant have any additions or clarifications to make at this time?
None at this time.
Okay. I think we'll open this for public comment. We'll open the public hearing, and staff, can you tell us if we have any, any people with presentations?
Mr. Chair, I do not have anybody with their hand raised at this time.
Mr. Chair, if I may, we do have in a question and answer, Mr. John Wilkinson, who has a question that perhaps the consultant could answer. The question is, what is the added cost and benefit balance of going deep into the channel versus the current diffuser placement inshore from the Port of Anacortes dredge zone? And I think that Ms. Jordan Widener has an answer for that.
Yep. This is Ross speaking. This is Ross speaking on behalf of Jordan here.
Thank you, Ross.
Yeah, the, the benefit is, is it gets a better mixing zone. It's a more stable outfall. If you go back to the profile that Libby showed with the outfall, it gets to a flatter slope, and so the diffuser would be placed in a more stable, reliable place, less likely to plug. Whoa, you're right, you're right there. Go right there, Libby. See where the diffuser and see the C4 that kind of bet, kind of flattens out there versus putting it on a steeper slope back towards shore. And so you just have the added cost of the pipe, but a much better diffuser is further away from any kind of prop worse coming in and out of the port. It's in deep water. It's not going to be any kind of possibility getting snagged or anchored. So, it's a reliability thing that we chose to put it out there. It gets a much better mixing zone in excess of the standards, and we look at it as just the cost of material and, and only a couple of extra days to lay it, because the pipe is going to be laid out across the surface of the water, and then it'll go through a submergent. So, once you get past the excavation point, there's going to be a giant pipe that just gets submerged. So, that, that's why it's located out there. And hopefully that answers the question.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public with comments or questions? And Ms. Hart, we will close the public hearing and proceed to discussion or, or questions from the commissioners. Do any of the commissioners have comments or questions to make?
The Chair.
Ms. Martin.
Just, just a quick question. I'm ignorant of how these work, but you men, it mentions in the report something about a steel plate or something like that. Oh, is it along the cliff? I, I don't really understand what that meant.
I think you're talking about there's steel sheet piles will be on both sides of the utility line. This is Jordan's area. It's just, yeah, for shoring purposes, we're going to have, the contractor's going to put in sheet pile on both, there you go, Libby, on both sides of the pipe near the shore, just to stabilize and make sure that they can work safely within that area.
So, they're like pilings?
Yes. Yep, they're steel piled.
Got it. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Curtis, I think you have your hand raised.
Yeah, I have a question for Ms. Ms. Grinch. The mandatory neighborhood meeting on March 9th of this year, do we know how well attended that was or what dialogue took place there?
I, I was not present at the meeting. A previous planner was, I believe, but Mr. Widener may have an answer to that.
Yeah, I'll step in. It's Jordan Widener, but yes, yeah, it was well attended by the public. I know John, he's on this meeting. He was there. Tom was there, and we also have meeting notes if you would like to see those from the public meeting.
I think the meeting notes are part of the record. Is that not correct, Libby?
I don't believe that they are in the record.
Okay.
There was a, quite a long list of questions that neighbors had that, that was submitted as part of the public comments in this, for this project, and that's in your packet. And also, the applicant submitted responses to those as well.
So, to your knowledge, were there any unresolved questions or issues from that meeting?
Not to my knowledge, no.
No.
Yeah, we made sure to address all of those.
Perhaps that's why we aren't hearing from too many people today. Any other questions or comments from the commissioners? Mr. Graff?
Yeah, the, the question I had was Mr. Wilkinson's letter dated June or July about blasting and his concerns about impact to his property. I, I'm assuming then that those, his questions and his concerns were addressed, considering he's in the, in the public forum and he hasn't made any comment.
Yeah, we made sure that he, yeah, he made those clear in his SEPA comments, and we made sure to address all of those accordingly.
Yeah, we'll have a certified blast plan, and there will be monitoring to make sure that the vibrations don't exceed the standards that are published for blasting in residential areas.
Yeah. There's a condition of approval that talks about direct communication with residents and adjacent property owners and pre-blast and post-blast damage surveys of nearby homes.
Chair, I do notice that John Wilkinson has
Yeah, this is, this is John Wilkinson. Since there was reference to earlier correspondence, I'd, on behalf of neighbors, I'd assembled that list of questions, losing track of time back in late spring, early summer, but obviously, most of those were relative to the uplands portion, specifically the impact of blasting that 40-foot-deep trench past houses, but also relative to access to the neighborhood, you know, via Fourth Street and others. And then also concerns about the, I think there's over a dozen utility intersections in the upland route that will service all the houses in the neighborhood. So, the, the uplands route is very invasive. Some people are going to leave town for a number of months, and somebody else has sold their house down there on you to get out of it. So, anyhow, that's the majority of concerns from the neighbors is, is the upland section. But thanks to Libby at all for the responses they have and Jordan for the responses they've given today.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkinson. Appreciate your input. So, just by way of discussion, it sounds like most of the issues that have been raised have been either resolved or mitigated, and those, just double checking with Ms. Graich, the, any particular requirements are con, are included in the conditions of the use permit?
That's correct, Mr. Chair, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Just Mr. Tretzky.
A couple of questions, if I may.
Please go.
Is the old line going to be decommissioned or is it going to be left there as a backup if ever needed as a possibility or?
My understanding is that it will be decommissioned. Ms. Widener may have more information about that.
You are correct, Libby. Nope, it'll be decommissioned. We can't keep two of them open per DNR requirements.
Will we leave it in the ground so that it could be used, it could be easily utilized if, if, if ever, if ever needed?
Most likely, DNR will require to remove any of the surface-mounted pipe and diffuser and all that stuff, so it will become unusable, and also the colleges' operation permit for the plant does not allow that to remain in service. We will have, we will have
Any kind of an estimated cost to this project?
Yeah, I think that for me, that we have total cost, engineering, everything is between twenty-five and thirty million dollars.
And and the sources of that funding are?
We're using disaster relief money, state money, and a city match.
Okay. I did hear one statement. This line is going to be dramatically longer than the old one, which will help, which would help it not get snagged by anchors or something being dragged along the bottom. I guess in my mind, I'm trying to figure out how something longer is less likely to get snagged. It seems like the longer it is, the more, the the greater the possibility that it could be snagged.
But because we're burying it through the shallow area out to about Station Twenty-One on the screen, and then this is the steep slope, so we're getting across that to get out there. But as we get deeper where the diffuser is the most likely to be damaged, the HDB pipe will be anchored, and it it gets drug around a little bit. It might move. But the diffuser is what you really don't want to get damaged or plugged full of sediment.
Thank you.
So that's why, you know.
Mr. Chair. Graff.
Hey, is it, is it appropriate for us to be concerned about looking at opportunities for cost overrun or anything like that, considering, well, considering that I think this was initially in at around twenty million, and then it was just briefed at twenty-five to thirty? And assuming that the grants come in and the and the FEMA money comes in or doesn't come in, is there an opportunity to shorten the outcome within a more acceptable budget as a option for the city?
That would require re-permitting and a new mixing zone study, so that's probably not viable under construction real easy. And just to be clear, the number I quoted includes all costs and not just construction. So a lot of people refer to construction and that gives you a lower cost, but that's design permitting, testing, the entire work that has gone on for the project.
Okay, so if my understanding is correct, then once we're in with this plan and we go through and we receive all the permits from the state, we're we're in it for the for the win. And and there's no opportunity unless to make any changes without a substantial impact to time and probably even more money. Okay, thank you.
Yep, impact. There's always something you can find, but generally speaking, and in our current FEMA dollars is in for the percentage of the project. So it it, whatever the costs are, the state and the feds are in for the percentage. Everybody's ratio remains the same. They don't cap it and then walk away from it.
Okay, any other commissioners have questions or comments? Any discussion? I guess I'm waiting to hear a motion then.
I'll make a motion for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Juretsky. Can I read the proposed language of a motion? And if you agree with that, we will use that to make the decision.
You bet.
The proposed motion is to recommend the city council approval of SDP twenty twenty-one zero 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 five, subject to the recommended conditions of approval contained within the staff report. Does that sound good for you?
Sounds great.
We have a second.
I second that motion.
Okay. Let's take a take a vote. Mr. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. Juretsky?
Yes.
Mr. Mullino?
Yes.
I don't have the rest of the pe- people on my screen here. Linda?
Oh, yes.
And Jack?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes also. Motion carries six to six to zero with one person absent.
Thank you.
Thank you much, everybody. We'll move on to item two, public hearing, SDP twenty twenty-one zero 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 nine, Skyline Dock and Piling Project. Throw it back to you, staff. Who's presenting?
Me. I am Emily Morgan, senior planner for the city. Let me get my PowerPoint going. I'm going to make sure that you guys can see it this time. Okay, are we live?
We're live.
Okay, so as stated, this is an open record pre-decision hearing and decision for the Skyline Dock and Pilings Replacement. This is for the Inner Bay Condo Association. The project location is two zero zero one on Skyline Way. The applicant is Tyler Zimmerman of TZ Engineering. I unfortunately don't think he is attending this evening, but it seems to be a pretty straightforward project, as we will further discuss. So the project history, on March second, there was a mandatory pre-application meeting. And then on August twelfth, the mandatory neighborhood meeting was held. Staff was in attendance, and it was well received from the neighbors. This project is one of, I'd say, five in this area for different redecking, new piles, similar projects. On September fourteenth, the formal application was submitted. And on October fifth, it was deemed complete for processing. On October thirteenth, we published a notice of application in public hearing with the optional CIPA DNS. And on the twelfth of this month, the public comment period had ended. The, on the fifteenth, we issued a CIPA determination of non-significance. So the proposal is to replace the existing creosote pilings, concrete floats in the gangway for the existing community marina. The existing concrete floats are approximately seventeen hundred square feet, and they would be replaced with a steel-framed graded floats. They're currently just concrete without any open space. This project will allow for sixty-two percent open grading for that light penetration. And the floats are going to be installed in the same layout and location as the existing, so the footprint is not changing. Additionally, the existing creosote pilings will be replaced with twelve-inch galvanized steel pilings driven approximately fifteen inches below grade. That gangway is three feet by thirty-two feet currently, and it will be replaced with a slightly wider and longer graded gangway. So based on our Shoreline Management Act and the city's SMP, this project requires a shoreline substantial development permit and not a shoreline exemption because it is replacing exact wording. So the scope of work proposes repair via replacement, which is typically allowed with a shoreline exemption, but because this project is for the replacement of the decking, the deck substructure, AKA the floats, along with the replacement of more than fifty percent of the existing pilings, that bumped it up to the shoreline substantial development permit, which isn't allowed use in the urban and aquatic shoreline designation for private piers and docks. So kind of the key points and takeaway here, the proposed dock is self-mitigating. That being said, it is due to the removal of the creosote pilings, the old wood decking on the concrete floats, as well as, again, the open grading on the decks, so that way it does allow for light penetration. Again, the aquatic designation of the shoreline master program does allow for private piers, docks, and floats. There's no anticipated loss of ecological function. As part of reviews, staff did review the critical areas. This area does not show habitat of significance. The critical areas that are present, it is located in a tsunami hazard area, but because the dock is installed waterward and outside of the hazard area, it does not apply to the proposed project. And further, it does have determination of being within a frequently flooded area, so as part of the building permit application, a floodplain development permit would be required and reviewed by the building official. The proposed dock, again, is not going to increase in size. It will be the exact same footprint with just better materials. And again, this design adheres to agency, state and federal, and the SMP requirements for these types of projects. So with that, based upon the application materials findings of fact and conclusions within the staff report, staff recommends the planning commission approve the SDP, subject to the proposed conditions of approval within said staff report. And thank you for listening, and let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Last time we looked at one of these, a few months ago, one of the questions was hours that the contractor could be working. I'm assuming we have a limitation on this project also.
So those hours typically apply to all different construction-type projects. I think it's I think it's in here. Yes, seven AM to ten PM. Those are the hours of construction based on our noise work.
Did the contractor give you an estimate how long the pile driving would be going on?
It's in the JARPA, in in the application materials.
I didn't remember seeing. It it's not important.
I I know that it will be temporary, and it, I think they were only proposing that it would be a couple of days of work out there.
I don't know if Don.
But they also have to play the tides.
Yeah, I don't know if Don knows the answers. Are these the original ones that were put in in the seventies? Or have these been replaced once before?
Mr. Juretsky, no, those are the original ones.
And they go back to the mid-seventies, don't they?
That's correct.
It was time.
Yeah.
Any other commissioner questions? Mr. Curtis?
Yeah, Ms. Morgan, I see others in the the comments, Exhibit D, there's an email from Mr. Kevin Joseph from fifteen October. It was interesting. It says the SOX Seattle Indian Tribe has no concerns with the project and will defer to any other interested tribes. Can I presume there were no other interested tribes that had any comment?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions by the commissioners? Do we have any applicant remarks or comments here? Since our action type is a public hearing, I'm going to open the public hearing. Do we have any members of the public who are here or wish to speak?
Mr. Chair, we do not have any public in attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Eichels. We will close the public hearing. Any last comments or questions by planning commissioners or any of the staff clarifications, anything?
Mr. Chair, a question.
As with the other other projects earlier this year, the materials will be recycled?
I I believe so. I know that they will be disposed of at an upland material, upland area. So I believe it is a recycle of sorts. I can't speak to the specifics because I don't.
Of sorts. Okay.
They will be disposed of correctly. Let's just put it that way.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Since I have the language in front of me, I will move to approve SDP twenty twenty-one zero 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 nine, subject to the staff recommended conditions of approval contained within the staff report. Did I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Mullino?
Yes.
Mr. Juretsky?
Yes.
Mr. Graff?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, makes it unanimous for the participants here in the meeting. A vote of six to zero with one member excused and absent. Any other comments or questions or thoughts for the good of the order? Any other old business? And I propose we close this meeting and go have a nice holiday, y'all. Thank you, everybody, for being here.
Yes, and thank, again, thank you all for being here this evening.
And thank you, staff.
Oh, very much so.
Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Good night, all.
Good night. Thank you all.